Morning, Commissioner Lopez on Zoom. Commissioner Meister, I think, is unavailable for the meeting.
Morning.
County announcements, Tanya, are you going to handle that?
Oh, I will handle. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So for county announcements, Stephanie is going to cover the Health Department back to school free vaccinations. That will be at USD 259 on August 17th and the 24th. And then she will provide a reminder for the public budget hearing that will be on Wednesday, August 21st, and go over the online budget forum. And then for the last item, we want to cover Cake Hometown Hero. That's all for county announcements.
All right. Um. We have one proclamation, National Health Center Week. And then we have a short new business item, but it's packed with stuff. Number, item D, first new business item will be the land donation agreement. It's my understanding the Lang team will be present and present on that too with Tanya. I'm going to go to item E now and I'll stop here a minute, let Kirk kind of talk about this agenda item. It's the solar issue and kind of step you through. What's in your packet today, what the process will be on this for next Wednesday. So Kirk?
Thanks, Tom Kirk, sponsor Deputy County Counselor. Coming before you is the same item that has come before you several times within the last year. Is consideration of potential changes to the zoning code in regards to commercial solar projects? And as part of this process, if you will recall, there is a moratorium currently in place. We are not addressing that presently. That is set to expire on September 13th. As for the present item, it's consideration of actual changes to the code revisions. Part of the continuance during this process was to allow the Berkeley Group, an outside consulting firm, adequate time to review the situation. And really for context with what they've been doing, I think the three prongs of what we've asked them to do kind of illustrates what our outlook has been. So first off, we wanted them to review the potential changes to the code that have been proposed and considered by the MAPC. So look at the proposed changes that have already come to the B O C C. The second line is to take into consideration some of the interests expressed by Commissioners. And then the third prong of analysis was to provide the, some of the standards. So if you will, kind of a bird's eye view of common regulations that are implemented as part of these commercial solar projects. So those are the three things that we asked them to really delve into. They provide us with a report. My understanding is that it was published on the MAPD website on Tuesday, I believe. And that will also be included in the agenda packet. They will also have a representative available next week for this meeting in order to discuss further their report. In conjunction with that, I believe Scott Wadel or one of his staff will be available to discuss potential changes to the code. Coming before you, once again, the recommended action is to adopt the findings of the MAPC and also adopt their proposed regulations. So those are the regulations that actually came to you a few months ago. Now, the reason that we formulate it this way is because if you look into our code, when we look at the referred recommended action, those are the, those are the actions and regulations recommended by the MAPC. So that will be the recommended action. However, if you look within the staff report, I do address an alternative set of potential code revisions. Now, those are potential code revisions that have been drafted by staff. And that kind of stems out of the analysis that we received from the Berkeley Group. And so within that, an alternative action for you may be that you could override the MAPC recommendation and adopt the alternative set of potential code revisions in the unified zoning code. That would be done by two thirds majority or four of our five commissioners. Now concerning this alternative set of potential code revisions, that is not presently in the packet. However, is my anticipation that these potential revisions will be in the final agenda that goes out today. And part of the goal with this, with the formatting is the end product that we will put in here is hope. We, we plan on showing you what the present code changes are. We'll redline or sorry, what code current provisions are. We'll highlight in yellow what the proposed recommendations are by the MAPC. And then we'll redline any additional changes that might be made based off of the Berkeley Group's report. So it's three tiered, and I think that goes into kind of what we've been doing here, which is building upon input as it's come along. Are there any questions at this time?
I bet so, yeah. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, Kirk, thanks for that information today. First thing I want to do is I want to thank MAPD and I want to thank legal staff and everyone else that's been involved in this, and especially the Berkeley Group who helped us out. Because we wouldn't be at this point without a lot of time and effort. I know you've been burning the midnight oil because we're trying to get something that we can adopt on August 7th. And that's what we've been working towards. And the Berkeley Group, the report didn't come in until like the 26th of July. And so you've had to incorporate a lot of information. This morning I did start reading through the 400 pages that I was in the agenda. So the whole agenda is over 740 pages. So anybody that's interested in light reading this weekend, they have an opportunity. But as I was digging through it, I said, wow, I don't understand it because there's no changes to the regulations. And Kurt did a great job of explaining that they will be in there before the end of the day when it will be published. I also asked him to kind of put through what pages the different documents are on so that you can go to those. Most of those you're probably not going to care about because they're history. What you care about is what they're going to put in today that's not in there right now. So I really hope that on the 7th, we can adopt something and move forward with this. One question though, we still have a moratorium until the 17th. Do we also need an agenda item to delete that moratorium? Or do we wait till the 17th to delete it? Or what do we do with the moratorium?
Yes, the moratorium is set for September 13th. And I, I, I'm fairly confident in my memory, but I can't say explicitly a hundred percent. I believe the way that the moratorium language was is that the September 13th would be the end date, unless approved before that time. And I think that might have operated as an automatic, as an automatic termination of the, of the moratorium, but I can certainly look into that.
We have to think ahead. I appreciate that. Truly, I appreciate the amount of hours because I know you two all have worked tremendous number of hours trying to get this put together. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you again for the same, same comments as Commissioner Dennis. Appreciate all the work that's been done, but I do have a couple of concerns. I don't think the Commissioners really have been forthright necessarily in being able to discuss maybe our concerns because we've been resistant to, I think, to share all of our concerns that maybe, you know, even this entire process, I've never really had a chance to say how I feel about any of this. Now, my concerns have basically been pushed to the back burner, just letting this process cook a little while. And so I don't know that they're, I'm not so sure that they're addressing my concerns. Maybe they are, but I have a number of things I've never talked about that I certainly hope those regulations address, but they, I'm not so sure that they will. So I have those concerns. Second of all, this is a large document, as Commissioner Dennis just mentioned a minute ago. I think that it's going to take some time for people to digest what they're seeing. And so I, it's not said, it's not said in the recommended action. I'm sorry. It's not said in the recommended action, but I think we ought to, number one, have a public hearing. We should open a public hearing, solicit public input, close a public hearing, and then we can continue. And because of the size of this document and because of the, the lateness of the information coming out right now, and it's only a few days away, we would potentially adopt this. And the impact that will have on Central County for the generations to come, I think it's appropriate for we would actually delay action on this for one week. So we go and take, take public comment and then not adopt it. Give us a week for us to chew on what they say. And to continue to review this document, so we come together on the following meeting, I assume that's the 14th, for us to adopt them on that date rather than on the 7th.
I certainly appreciate your concerns. First off, in regards to your own specific concerns about this code, certainly there would be an opportunity, I guess, at this August 7th meeting for you to voice any additional concerns you may have. We will have a Berkeley Group representative there as well. So hopefully they can maybe address micro issues or questions you may have. And then staff would also be available to address micro issues. And additional revisions could potentially be made to the code as needed. In terms of the question of deferment, certainly it is an opportunity. We've seen on this specific item alone that it has been deferred multiple times. And so an action of the board could be to defer it in some way for further review.
And you say, you say they were deferred, it sounds like a very negative term. I think at the end of the day, we're moving towards adoption, we're getting very close. But this has been a year long process. And to take one week at this point, once the document's now finally public, it's finally got all the I's dotted and T's crossed. And again, you guys are still, even right now, adding content to the regulations. I mean, is it complete right this very minute? I'm not sure it's complete as we sit here. So it's still being, it's still being codified, if you will. And because of this, again, I don't know when the, when the work will actually be done and say, here's a final document for consideration. It's still not there. So just to be respectful to the, the public that has a strong opinion about this, respectful to future generations, to take one more week for us to chew on everything we've been given and hear from the public once again, I think is just being respectful. And I, I don't want to rush to the very end of this. We've been very patient and long suffering to get to this point. One more week for us to chew on what we've been handed is reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I don't have a problem with a public hearing. We've had a number of them. And when you look at the, at the 400 pages that's in the agenda, you're going to see a whole list of public meetings that we've had. So I know that they've been involved every step of the way. We had a meeting out at the Extension Center and we've had numerous meetings with MAPD. So the public has had an opportunity a number of times to speak, but having an opportunity when we're looking at adopting them, that's something we would do automatically, I would think. So I appreciate that. As far as Commissioners input, if you recall, this has come up several times and I've always made my concerns known. And every Commissioner had an opportunity to make their, their concerns known at the previous meetings. But every one of us was invited to a meeting with the Berkeley Group so that we could make sure that our concerns were addressed. And only Pete Meister and I were the only two that took them up on that. So Commissioners have had an opportunity to, to put their inputs into this document.
Just to, I guess, response, I want to be very formal about this public hearing. I want to make sure it's clear that we are intentionally inviting people to come up, we're open a hearing, let them speak and then close that, just so that it's clear that we are checking those boxes. Because I think, again, it may not be required, but it's very good practice. And second of all, I don't recall necessarily, maybe you're probably right, Commissioner Dennis. I don't remember a great opportunity where they've reached out to me and said, we'd like to sit down with you and talk. I'm not sure when and how that happened, but maybe I missed the email. But I don't remember actually having someone reach out and actually ask me those questions that we, seeking my input. I'm not sure, I'm not so sure that that happened very, wasn't very aware if that did happen. So thank you.
Kirk, let's talk about the structure of this, this meeting. Obviously, people can come at any point in time and offer public comment during a meeting. Talking about amending and changing the zoning code. What, what is the guidelines on a public open hearing for something like that? Is this something that needs to be unique and specific as if?
So we've mimicked. So in dealing with potential code changes, that is a statutory, there is statutory guidance on that process. The actual public hearing that is required by statute already took place at the MAPC level. So what you're doing here is anything you do here is supplementary to that. So not required by statute. I would be cognizant of the fact that in prior zoning cases, it's generally allowed and permitted for people to come up and make, give their opinions on these items. So I, I believe it would be appropriate with what the Commission is saying, just in terms of a procedural process, to potentially just follow that similar, similar. Yeah, the similar approach, in which case Scott Wadel would be available. I think he would probably open it up. I anticipate he would allow the Berkeley Group representative to speak at some point regarding this report. And then Scott could go into more details on potential changes to these code revisions. And then it could be opened up to the public for their comments on it.
So let's, I appreciate that format. Because there's going to be a staff recommendation. So we're going to hear from the Berkeley Group, but we are also going to have a presentation about the staff recommendation report.
So the formal, the formal recommendation.
For the public to be able to hear that.
So the formal recommendation to you is actually what the MAPC approved. Now, I fully anticipate Scott Whale will give a more detailed analysis and outline of the potential alternative set of potential code changes.
Could we firm that up instead of anticipating that he'll do it? Can we ask him to do it?
I can certainly ask him to.
That'd be helpful.
But you're going to have the motion for the alternative available to us on our desk, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yes.
Because the alternative is what we're looking for, not the original recommendation.
And just to follow up on this, normal, what normally we have code revisions and MAPC takes a look at that and they usually make a recommendation on the code, the codes before we come to us. And we usually do have a public hearing on coded options. And so this one is a little bit different because it's not required. And this one also does require a super majority vote to approve this. And the reason that is, is because of, talked to you yesterday, I think it was, or day before, the, the super majority requirement to approve this is because of what reason?
Okay, two, two things, if I may, Commissioner, going back to your prior comment. We have seen code changes in the past. And that, I think historically, they follow the same process, which is giving the public the, the opportunity to speak on the direct item. Second, in, in your question, there are different sets of voting requirements. So because this is coming, the changes that are coming from the MAPC, where you choose to choose to adopt those changes without any other changes, i.e. not making any modifications of your own, not including the Berkeley Group's recommendations, things of that nature, that would just take three out of five votes. That's pursuant to statute. Now, if you want to make any types of other modifications other than what the MAPC originally recommended several months ago, that would require a two thirds majority vote or four out of five Commissioners.
And why is that?
By statute.
Okay, so if by adopting the findings of Berkeley and adding those to the regulations, it now requires a, a four out of five.
Yes.
Approval.
It, it would now, as another one of your alternatives, and Commissioner, you asked about the different options. I've laid it out a little bit within the staff report of different alternative actions the board could take. One of those other alternative actions that you could move for would also be to refer this back to the MAPC for further consideration. If you referred it back to them and then it came back to you after that time, then that two thirds majority requirement would go away. Now, we are talking about logistical issues in terms of the moratorium. And so I would prefer to discuss that privately, you know, just if, if you want more information on that.
I guess what I'm saying is what we're actually considering has actually not been approved in its, in its final formats, we're coming, is it coming to us? The staff has not actually been adopted by MAPC. They adopted a previous version without these changes.
Correct. The, the alternative set of proposed revisions, the more comprehensive set that I said, builds on and incorporates everything we've received up this time. MAPC has not seen on it, has not seen it, has not weighed on it. That's correct.
And that's, and again, so that's, the reason I asked the question is I want to make sure it's very clear. Because MAPC hasn't actually adopted what we're going to be looking at and potentially adopting on our level. That's the reason why we have a, a super majority requirement. Okay. Again, so just to formalize, I, I, I do expect public, public comment on almost any agenda item. I can use the word public hearing in this case. I want to formalize it just a little bit and say, we're going to be very intentional of opening an opportunity for people to speak, call it a public hearing, hear from everyone, and then close the public hearing. That, it's a little bit more formal than simply just saying, does anybody have an opinion they want to come and talk about this. And so a hearing is more of a formal process. And so that's what I'm advocating.
Is that at our discretion or is there any formal guidelines that need to be considered if we're talking about opening a formal public hearing on an agenda item? Is that just at our discretion or?
I believe that would just be a true discretion.
Okay. Anything else on this? J R is back there if he wants to opine? I'm looking. Okay. Yeah, he has worked on this for a while. Okay, Tom?
All right, now back to new business item F. The DA will be in to present a part-time position. I think I've discussed this with some of you. The DA has had, this position is a part-time position temporary for 18 months. And I can only by policy authorize for that length of time. Any further extension or adding this to a staffing table has to come from your authority. So he will be here to lobby for that. It's not a huge fiscal hit, but it is, it's within policy of staffing, the Commission has to, has to approve that. Item G, we've discussed all, with all of you, it's a donation of the Coliseum Booster Pump Station to Park City. And it has the, the estimated fair value listed on the agenda of just a little over $47,000. We have been working on that for several months to get it accomplished. Item H, and Sheena's here to talk about this as well, but we would like to move that to consent. That is a, the, giving the ability of an employee to pull from their 457 because they've had a catastrophic incident in their life. And this is the ability to do that. Is that true?
Yeah, so this would be specific to, if an employee had a natural disaster, we use the example if an employee's home was hit by a tornado or something of that nature, they would have the right to go in and pull out up to $22,000 of their account without the 10% penalty fee of early withdrawal. And then they could also repay that back into the account.
This is giving approval to that, which is, we would take, I don't think we need a formal presentation on this. We'd like to put that on consent.
But they can also borrow against the 457 if they want to, couldn't they?
Yes, they could. But this, this would alleviate the, any penalty that they would have if they withdrew.
So that's in figure of federal regulations that they can withdraw in an emergency and not have to pay the penalty for the early withdrawal or anything?
That's correct. And that's part of the Secure Act of 2.0. So we've had other amendments to our 457 plan under this act as well.
This on pre-tax money or after tax money?
It would just be as, as long as it's in their 457 account, there's, it's divided depending on the employee's choice, how they want that taken out.
But is the federal government going to let you take out pre-tax money without paying any kind of penalty?
Yeah, under this, the penalty would not be there because they're attesting to the federal disaster.
But they have to pay it back?
Yes, they have the option to, yes.
They don't pay it back, do they pay a penalty?
I would have to defer the council on that. Good question. I just don't know the answer.
Well, I've got a 457, not planning on doing anything with it, but.
Thomas Henry Assistant County Counselor. So what this does is it allows, when there is a federally recognized natural disaster, it allows anyone that received economic impact from that, negative economic impact from that, to pull up to 22,000, as Sheena said, from their 457B account. That can be traditional or Roth, they can pull from either without a penalty. And what, there is an option to repay. With three years, there's no requirement that they repay. So they will not get the penalty regardless.
What if it's pre-tax money, though? The federal government's not going to give you back 22,000 and not get any taxes out of it if it's pre-tax money?
And get their hand. Penalty is not the same as tax. Penalty is a retirement penalty. Before age 15, nine and a half, you have to pay the 10% penalty. Taxes are due on every, all wage income. So those are two different things.
Yeah. So, so to the extent that you have recognized gains on what you're withdrawing from your traditional, you would have to pay taxes on those, but you would not have to pay the penalty on those. And for anything that is in a Roth, you've already paid the taxes on that. So there would be no taxes on this.
Okay. Sorry, I guess it's going on consent, but since I've got a 457, I'm interested in what the rules.
I have another question as well. So you mentioned federally recognized natural disaster.
Right.
So if someone houses, someone's house burns down, that's not going to call, that would not qualify.
That would not qualify.
Has to be a, such a large scale disaster. And when we declare a natural and a emergency of Central County, is that, is that the trigger for this?
No, it has to be a federally recognized event.
We, is there an example of what we, when we've had something like that happen?
I, I don't have one offhand, no, but it's, it's going to, it's going to be something that federal government's going to have to weigh in on. It's not.
So really the benefit is the, is the, the forgiveness of the 10% penalty for early withdrawal.
Yes.
That's the only thing that's being forgiven, but it has to be a qualified.
Yeah.
Issue. And I'm just curious, do they apply for that through, is this, does the county have any responsibility to review these or something? It's outside the county's responsibility to, to.
They would self attest to the disaster and send it into empower.
Okay, thanks.
Item I, thanks, Tom. Item I is Joe Thomas reported bids, a bit of bids and contracts. Then we get into consent. Item J is a professional engineering service agreement in a pre-historically designated benefit district, the Commission approved on March 20 of this year. This is the authorized, the service agreement. There is a fiscal note to it, but not to the county, it's to the developer. Item J, item K and L are the county engineer wielding his, his mighty power of traffic safety, a four-way stop. Item K is a four-way stop at 183rd and Pawnee. And item L is the establishment of a school zone by St. Mark's Elementary in District Three. And Lynn is here to answer any questions about.
Well, first of all, I appreciate our traffic safety engineer Lynn taking a look at these things. The public has been after us for some time to try and do some things around some of the schools in Goddard and the other ones up by St. Mark's. And with, with school starting, it's kind of important that we get some of these safety enhancements put in place before school starts. And so these will all be put in before school. Thank you.
Okay.
Item M is a zone change, and JR is here if there's questions, but it's a limited commercial to limited industrial in the area of 60th Street, South and South Oliver.
Just curiously on that, is that follow the normal, normal notification processes of signage and letters going out to neighbors within a certain radius and things like that? I don't know what's going on there, but I'd like to know. If I'm, if I'm going to have to, if I have a problem here, I need to know what's going on.
Good morning, Commissioners. JR Cox, Metropolitan Planning. To answer your question, Commissioner Hal, is, to the best of my knowledge, yes, the standard notices were sent and I can double check that.
So the only reason it's on consent is I assume there's no opposition.
That'd be my understanding. That's correct.
I'm going to ask you later on to verify that those notifications were sent and received no opposition whatsoever.
We'll have that answer for you.
Item N is permit modification for the HHW facility expansion. This has been, this expansion project has been worked on since 2022. And this is the latest modification of that, Tom. Is there anything else you want to add to that or?
I am unaware of this. And so we may ask to pull this off of consent at the moment.
All right, let's do that. Pull that. We'll bring it back the 14th.
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
I can ask her any questions concerning that.
Yep, go ahead.
So this right here is simply because we are making modifications to the household hazardous waste facility. KDHE needs to approve the fact that we're going to have temporary modifications going on and we're going to have to modify how we're doing our operations. So this is simply turning in how we're going to operate during the modifications and getting a permit for that. Again, they're okay. It was a process we knew we had to go through. We just needed to get to the point where we knew when construction was going to start so we can put those dates into the permit request.
Good. Okay, can leave it on then, Commissioner?
I think we're good. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Lynn. That's helpful.
Item O, and Adrian is on Zoom. Item P, and I know she sent a note to you all about this too. Both of these items have to do with either a grant amendment or funding agreement regarding the continuation of vaccine services. Any questions? We can refer to Adrian. And then earlier this morning, Joan sent a note on item Q. It's the agreement to, for the participating CMHC agreement with Comcare, Comcare and K Dads. So any questions on that, we can, Kim can answer them. True. Item R is a, an item we have discussed in public meeting before. It's the Second Amendment. It's the Second Amendment to the office lease agreement for the Ruffin Building to allow suspension.
How much? What's fiscal note?
Uh, from June 30 of 2025 to June 30 of 2028, it is $870,451 per year.
And if I can speak to that also, there is a early termination um after June 30th of 2027. We just have to give a 90-day notice on that.
Uh, item S, we've also discussed uh during legislative process. This is the charter resolution exempting Sedgwick County uh from certain provisions uh where we don't have to do, the Health Department doesn't have to do school inspections anymore, this is that, that item. Uh, item T is a uh consideration of a salary exception request. They went a little bit above my threshold to approve, it's at 13.5% above base. And that requires Commission official that, approval, that is item T. And the rest of this agenda is routine business. We do have a fire agenda, I believe it is only to, to do minutes and to see if there's any budget issues in fire. There are no other items on the fire agenda.
I have a question as well.
Please.
Earlier on the, on the announcements, you talked about the back to school vaccination, vaccines, vaccination program. You also mentioned, mentioned 259. We have, I think, how many school districts coming to Sedgwick County?
Yeah.
Last I knew.
Yeah.
Yes. Is this something special for 259 and other ones don't participate? What is this exactly?
I don't know if Adrian's still on, the bulk of the students in the county are at 259. And so my guess is that we targeted them because that's where the majority of the kids are. I, I think that if there are other schools that have a need, uh, we'd certainly work with them and make that.
Is this something that's done in the schools? I mean, where's, how's it?
We're doing it at the schools as part of their registration process.
Okay, we're all, okay. So just, have we done this in previous years?
We have, but I can get some additional information, we'll send you some more information about how this works and whether or not it impacts others as well.
And I'd like to know what other school districts we've notified that you'll help them out.
Adrian, all, is she up soon?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm still here.
Oh, very good.
So, so are, are you talking about the, the I A P grants or which?
Adrian, the question is about the, in the county announcements, they're going to talk about the vaccine clinic with 259. So could you talk a little bit about that and then other districts as well?
Absolutely, and other districts, it does, it's not just for, and good morning Commissioners, it's not just for uh Wichita schools, all the other schools can go as well, and they, they are aware of this. We found that last year, there were so many children that weren't uh up to date on their vaccines uh that we wanted to start doing these a little bit early this year uh to get kids up to date. So yes, it, we are doing them in partnership with Wichita schools, but other schools are invited as well. Anybody in Wichita and Sedgwick County can be vaccinated.
Does that include uh non-public schools?
It is for anybody, we, we don't ask which district they're in, if they're there, we are going to take care of them.
So it'll just say this, really, uh, anybody, anybody that age range, regardless of their school, they can, they can participate.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay, is that everything that needs to be discussed this morning? Looks like it, have a good weekend, see you next week.